Now called to order the November 12, 2018, New Caney Independent School District Board and Trustees at 6:00 PM. Let me show that the floor is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation they give by Ms. Harrell and the main standing for clear religion, honor, integrity, and fidelity of Ms. Strachan.
Ms. Bell? How do we continue tonight with grateful hearts? We're grateful for our community, we're grateful for our students, our educators, and for our country. We ask that in all things we do, we glorify you and may you lead our country back to you. Thank you for your watch and care over our first responders and our soldiers who fight to keep us free, and we ask in all things we do, you give us wisdom as well as discernment, forgive us of our sins, and keep us safe on our way home in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule which stands, "One nation, united in Christ, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, united in Christ.
Out of two of our agendas, our recognitions for tonight, we will start with Ms. Mays from Crenshaw Elementary.
Good evening. I am pleased to announce our recognitions tonight, and I want to give recognition to -- I can get my Crippen people to come up here. Christopher, Janet, Ms. Webb, Jennifer, Norma, Ms. Hux. So, and Ms. Lo, I think is going to help translate for Christopher. Christopher's family is all in the audience tonight, and I could not ask for a more exceptional student who is a team player. He is a natural-born leader. He works very hard to achieve his goals. He's a member of the National Elementary Honor Society, and I have to say that he gets his attributes from his mom as well because she's one of our lead parenting partner Spanish teachers, and she -- the entire family just has the nicest manners and it's everything that New Caney ISD represents. So, thank you, Christopher.
Estamos muy orgullosos de Christopher. Él es mi líder en nuestra escuela. También es un equipo con sus compañeros. Él es un ejemplo siempre y es un miembro de sociedad de honores nacionales. Él trabaja bien duro para alcanzar sus metas. Definitivamente, su familia es igual que él. Estamos gracias a su mamá por ser voluntaria y también de la familia para tener moradas buenas, y estamos muy orgullosos de él, y no podemos esperar a ver qué puede hacer en su futuro. Gracias, Christopher.
Okay, next up is Ms. Nicole Webb. She is the mother of our former astronauts, Lindy and Richard Webb, and she was an outstanding parent volunteer and substituted at our school, and I said, "You're there so much, why don't we hire you?" So, she literally dances out in the morning in the car rider line and makes everyone stay. She high fives all of the staff, all of the students. She develops loving relationships, and I bet she knows all 551 kids' names, and so she's infectious and contagious, and her word is joy. So, thank you, Ms. Webb. Next up is our amazing teacher, Ms. Laura Hawes, and her word is dependable. She's been at Crippen Elementary and New Caney ISD for 11 years, all at Crippen. She was a first, fourth, and a fifth grade teacher, and she's an amazing RTI specialist. She has a bleeding heart for just kids in need and wants to remediate them. She helped start our National Elementary Honor Society and our No Excuses University initiatives, and last year in April, I came to her about six weeks before the storm and said, "I have a teacher that's out. I need you to go in and take over the class and remediate them," and without a blink of an eye, she said, "Okay," and she was in there within five minutes. So, she does whatever it takes to have to. Thank you, Ms. Hawes. Next up is our awesome transportation best driver, Ms. Jennifer Nichols. She drives -- yes, she drives a 372. She's full of thyme, and she follows up. She means business. She's able to tell you about every child, what they're doing, when they're doing it, and will even come and talk to me and say, "You need to talk to this child or want good things," and also to help them and keep them safe. So, thank you. Okay, next up is Janet Miranda. She is our amazing custodian, one of our custodial workers. She's been with the district for nine years, with New Caney and with Crippen for four. She's dependable, she's reliable, she's a leader, she helped tutor my daughter in Spanish, and she's funny while she cleans. She's also the mom of the star kicker on the Porter High School Spartan varsity freshman and wideout, so all the kicking, that's her thing. So, this is one strong mom. And last but not least, our child nutrition, Norma Pena. She's a very hard worker. She's new to Crippen this year. She's very dedicated. She's never missed a day. She's there on time, punctual. We can always count on her. She loves the kids at Crippen, and she loves her job, and you can totally tell. So, thank you.
Next up, Ms. Alano from Bens Branch Elementary.
I would like to introduce the representatives from Bens Branch Elementary. So, we are going to begin with Ms. Christina Holka, who is our paraprofessional. Ms. Holka has had two students come through Bens Branch Elementary. She has taken over our STEM lab, our media specialist, but not so much as she does what our media specialists ask for do. She has created a rocking lane for our campus, activities for our kids, has taken this job and made it her own, and comes to me with ideas and says, "I want to do this." Yes, ma'am. And that's my answer, because she has such great ideas to continue to challenge our kids, and we are so blessed and happy to have her. She also represents part of our PTO and organizes our bridge day and all those other wonderful activities, so we are forever grateful to Ms. Holka. Congratulations, Ms. Holka. Our next staff member is Ms. Bonnie Black, who is from Child Nutrition. Ms. Black came to Bens Branch and has been nothing but a ray of sunshine in our community. She knows our kids, she knows our teachers, always smiling. She loves jumpstart. She thinks that's great, and all of those things, and she is just forever smile on her face, making sure our kids are taking care of, and we appreciate everything that she does for Bens Branch. Thank you, Ms. Black. Ms. Maria Asana is our custodian. She's also had a student come to Bens Branch, and we are very pleased to have had him on our campus. This lady will do anything and everything. She comes in in the afternoon with the biggest smile and walks around and loves on our teachers and loves on our students, and we cannot imagine our campus without her. She did not want to come tonight because she had to be at work, and I told her she had to be here instead. I told you this was more important, but we are still forever grateful, and she was self-humbled by this, that she cried in my office, and I just love her, and we are so grateful for her. Our next member is Loretta Holloway, who is our fourth-grade dual-language Spanish side of dual teacher. She is also our dual-language team leader. Ms. Holloway made it a shame coming to lunch one day at Bens Branch, and I'd love to say I hired her, but actually, Miss Conzo found her in the cafeteria eating lunch with her daughter. She had taken the year off to concentrate on some other aspects of her life, and we kidnapped her, drug her, and she has been an outstanding member of our staff, our team, the best attitude. She will show up for reading planning when she was teaching math, because she wanted to make sure everything went together, and this is the person that I know will tell me when I'm messing up, and will know, will tell me when I'm doing a great job, and will come with just ideas and always has the kids' hearts at their -- at their best interest at their heart, and we are forever grateful to you, Ms. Holloway. And why aren't we all here? It's for our students. This is Adriana Portemela, who is a good creator. She's been with us for three years now, has volunteered for every possible group she can be involved in. Is a stand-up member of our student council. She is at every parenting partners event, helping provide babysitting, at every Christmas event, fun festival, and everything, smile on her face, always working hard. Her interaction with her peers and younger students is impactful, and I wish that all of our students could have the same positive attitude that she does. She's a member of our dual-language program, an outstanding member of that, and is just a wonderful, wonderful student, and drove her mom and dad here on their anniversary. So, she should be a proud student. Thank you for interacting and congratulating.
Out of the agenda is public hearing for financial integrity rating system of Texas. Ms. Dominic.
Okay, most information we're going to have is just in the PowerPoint. We will be using the last two pages of the big packet that you have, but the PowerPoint pretty much summarizes everything that's in the large packet. This is the public hearing for the 1718 first rating. Although it's a 1718 rating, it is based on the 1617 financial information from the district. There is a sign-in sheet in the back for you to plug in the public that hasn't signed in so that we can have proof that we had a public hearing, so there's a sign-in sheet located on the back table. A little bit of the first background. The Texas Education Code tells the TEA Commissioner that they need to develop a financial accountability system for public school districts. The Texas Administration Code defines that and says what it should look like and how it's to be applied. A little bit of background on New Caney ISD's first back for the rating. This is the 16th year for the rating. In all 16 years, New Caney ISD has earned the top score of superior rating. They did change it back in 1415 to say pass or fail, but we did receive a pass, so this is the 16th consecutive year that we've received the highest rating. The first indicators. Indicators one through five are yes or no, but they're considered to be critical indicators. If you receive a no on any of those, then you fail or have a substandard achievement. New Caney ISD was able to answer a yes to all of those questions. Indicators six through 15 provide the district with opportunity to score 10 points on each one of those. Indicators nine, 12, 13, 14, and 15, you either receive all the points or another point, and the other indicators are ranked, and you get zero, two, four, six, eight, or 10. New Caney did receive all 10 points on all indicators except for indicator number six, we received eight points, and indicator number 10, we received six points. On first indicator six, basically that addresses the cash on hand. Last year, we only received six points on this indicator. We received eight points this year. Last year's breakdown was 64.43, and this year it was 79.83. Basically, in order to get all 10 points, you have to have 90 days cash on hand. We currently have 80 days, so we are increasing that, and we have one up since last year. Indicator number 10 is basically fairly complicated, but what it is, is your revenues and your debt service fund and your general fund subtract your expenditures out, add your debt back in, and your debt service fund balance only, and they want you to have at least 1.2 ratio of your debt service payments. We had our ratio was actually 1.1396. This is because if you remember in 2017, this year, that's when Hurricane came through, we were not able to recognize revenue in August. Had we recognized August revenue, we would have had a 1.24 and we would have received all 10 points. So, that's the reason for that, so we're so lucky. So, in summary, the 1718 rating, we did receive a superior rating. We scored 94 of 100 points, and then the next thing we have to do is review the financial management, and that's in the big packet. The last two pages, though. There's also copies of this on the back table for anybody that wants. These are just some disclosures that were required to present. One of them is the superintendent's employment contract that is located on the district's webpage under the finance tab. Also, reimbursements that are received by or paid on behalf of the superintendent and the school board members. This is for the fiscal year 2016-17. This includes bills, lodging, transportation, fuel, mileage, and other. Other is like membership dues and things for conferences and stuff like that. Superintendent Franklin was $13,568, mix in $1,600, Rowe $1,500, Perkel $988, Shifley $611, Trout $1,0259, Turner $852. The third disclosure is any outside compensation or fees received by the superintendent for consulting services, and that was none. The fourth disclosure is any gifts received by the board members or superintendent that totaled $250 or more in the aggregate for that fiscal year. That was also none. And the last is any business transactions between the school district and board members, and that's also none from 2017 fiscal year. Are there any questions from the board or the public? Thank you.
Slight change in our agenda. Next, we're going to have the Education Foundation update. Ms. Dominic.
Thank you, members of the board and trustees, for allowing me to present to you on behalf of the New Caney ISD Education Foundation. My name is Ann Rubin-Dominick, and I am the president of the New Caney ISD Education Foundation. Thank you for your continued support of the Education Foundation. Without your support, we could not do what we do to support the students and teachers in New Caney ISD. The New Caney ISD Education Foundation exists to enrich, maintain, and expand programs necessary to meet the district's stated mission of academic excellence. For the 2018 grant cycle, 120 grants were requested by members of the New Caney ISD staff totaling $360,000. Our grant review process includes a blind ranking of proposals by a carefully selected grant grading committee, which includes education foundation members, top donors, and volunteers. Each grant is evaluated three times based on 10 criteria, including how their great ideas supports New Caney ISD's portrait of a graduate, as well as additional criteria, including purpose, innovation, behavior, attendance, grades, objectives, and student engagement. The process allows for funding of grants from $500 to $5,000 per project, with the majority of our requests being in the upper range. This year, we are proud to support the district and our New Caney ISD Education Foundation 2018 grant recipients by funding 40 great ideas totaling $124,721.91. Trends this year include STEM, drum fit, and education gardens, and if you'd like a complete list of the grants funded, I have the list in each of you. With your acceptance of this donation, we will be able to proudly say that in our six years, we have collectively funded 191 individual grants and two cornerstone grants with a combined total of over $700,000. On behalf of the New Caney ISD Education Foundation, we are pleased to donate $124,721.91 this year to the district.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'd like to publicly thank Ann for her service to our district through the Education Foundation. I think it's noteworthy that you don't even have students in our district. You're just a community member who saw a need, and you're passionate, and you give your time and your resources and your leadership to the district, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Out of four on the agenda is open forum. We didn't have anybody sign up. Out of five on the agenda is closed meeting. The board now meeting closed meeting of authority of Texas Government Code 551.074. Purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of a ripoff. Any action as a result of a closed session discussion will take place after the board recommitted and open meeting. Time is 6:50. The board is closed meeting at 8:18 PM, and we'll now recommite the open session. Out of six on the agenda is reports of opposing board members.
Mr. President, I just wanted to take a second because I know you didn't make it in time for that reception that was given in honor of you, Mr. Rubin, and your service to the district, but I just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the rest of the board to say thank you for your service and for leading our board over the last several years.
It's been a pleasure, some of the board, to be here about 10-plus years, something like that, this tracking effort. A lot of good things have happened in the district, a lot of good people. I made a lot of friends, people I didn't know before I got on board, and now I consider them friends. So, good luck to everybody, and I ain't going too far. I'll be down there with some of them. But good luck to everybody, and I wish well for the district. A lot of good things have happened. I mean, this is prime example of a lot of good stuff going on here. Good luck to you all.
Out of seven on the agenda is superintendent's report. We'll start out with the curriculum, school start time update. Ms. Chauvin.
Good evening. Ms. Harrell asked for some data on attendance rates, tardies, test scores, since the district changed start and stop times, and you asked for teacher feedback to, if available. We have prepared some of that data for you, but before I start, I want to let you know a little bit, part of the reason we made that decision is research based on what we thought was best for kids, so I'm going to read. Oh, I can't read that. So, I'm going to read it from here. I just want to read this little part. Adolescents who do not get enough sleep are more likely to be overweight, not engage in daily physical activity, suffer from depressive symptoms, engage in unhealthy risk behaviors such as drinking, smoking tobacco, and using illicit drugs, and then perform poorly in school. In a policy statement published in 2014, the American Academy of Pediatrics urged middle and high schools to modify start times as a means to enable students to get adequate sleep and improve their health, safety, academic performance, and quality of life. The AAP recommended that middle and high school should aim for a starting time of no earlier than 8:30 a.m. So, that's just part of an article that I read today that I thought would be good, just got a little bit to share. I think you put it in the same line as well. Attendance first. I'm going to start doing the first. Go ahead.
Tardies is first.
Oh, okay, tardies is first. When you look at our data on tardies, as you can see, we started with the year before the start, stop times were changed, which was 2014, 2015. So, you can see the first year our tardies went up, and then after that, they declined a little bit, and then you see a great big jump this year. And I wanted to let you know that Dan has been explaining to me that this year, we've had schools take a little bit of a pre-attendance at 8 o'clock so that we would know which kids weren't there, and then we'd call to see if they can get to school. So, that's why it's up a little bit for this year. Attendance, our attendance has improved directly. You can see there. And then the next one is our test scores, and so it was hard to kind of summarize this for you, but what I did is I did elementary reading star on this one, and you can see some areas went up, some areas went down, and some areas stayed the same. The next one is elementary math, and there's a big gaping hole in the middle, and that's because scores for that year for math didn't count. Commissioner decided they didn't count. For secondary, there's reading. You can see that some improved, some stayed the same, some went down, and then for secondary math, same thing. The year that there were no math scores, there were algebra scores. When we pull our principals informally, these were such comments. We've not had complaints from parents at our school. It's a long day for teachers when we have evening events, but that's about teachers for kids. The start time is good. Tardy students will be tardy regardless of the start time. Start and stop time works for our kids. We've had no complaints from our teachers or parents, and other principals said none complaints from parents either. We actually have a line where we need to drop their kids off at 6:35 a.m. We have no issues with the tardiness, but we'll have kids who are tardy who start at 9 o'clock. Some secondary principals were concerned with some aspects of the later start because most of those were being kept by letting events, new kids leaving school, but we've worked through that and have some plans for that. Another principal was a little bit concerned about kids that have to work, and then another principal was worried if we went back to an earlier start time, if kids were working, they would get less sleep, so you can really argue both sides. And since we started in 2014-15, we have not received any parent calls or complaints since then. Mr. Franklin has some information that if you want more information about, and some articles that he can share too.
Yeah, I'd be glad to provide. He is a research and we base this on. There's lots of data out there. Just finished a book by Daniel Pink, which was interesting. I just read the book, but many of the things, the bestseller of the book is named Quinn. I've got a big copy if you'd like to read that book, but it talks about how you use time and the relevance of time and the hell lessons and the American Association of Pediatrics, and it has a lot of good information about time and how we use the time. So, it was interesting that a lot of things in the book, the book was published in 2018, were exactly the same things that we said in 2014, 15, when we were looking at this on a scientific basis. So, the data was interesting. So, if you'd like to read that, I'll share with it. If you can't sleep at night, if you'd like to read about statistical points of reference when it comes to how time is used and how it can be used throughout life, I'll share that with you. Also, I'll be glad to share with the American Association of Pediatrics what they provided that information along with what other districts are doing to send this or maybe towards trend.
Do you want to get a couple of them from these slides? We'll walk them. I'll read that.
This should, we can provide those. Michelle has those, but I mean, I'll give you a hard copy.
Bring them here, please.
Any other information, feel free to ask us.
I think Chad, the board, would make that shift, and it was not a board decision, that was an announcement.
it was not a board decision, that was an administrative decision. And so I still get people commenting on it in the community about that early times for the children to be out for the bus. And so the community can put me on the board. I just felt like I needed to ask those questions because I don't have the data to back up while we are sticking to it.
I'll be glad to share, I'll be glad to share more information that we presented tonight with a scientific background, a research-based background.
This is what I was looking for.
And that article, the article that I referenced, it was just an excerpt from it.
Thank you. I appreciate you providing that.
On the primary, did this increase the tardy rate? Is that what we decided?
Yes.
All right. But attendance is a group based.
Well, that's because she draws the 8:00 in the morning to call you.
But we're not really seeing a conclusive trend on start testing.
Too early. Those are a year behind anyway.
The concern that I have, it's a small population of students. But when I drop my elementary student off at 7:00, wide cross street at Wydow, I see 20 kids lined up at 7:00 o'clock in the morning waiting to get in.
Sure. And I promise you this, being a principal, where I started school at 9:00 in the morning, I had students there at 6:30. So I think you'll always see that trend of some students getting there earlier than others. But out of a population of 1,800 kids at Wydow, you'll always have that.
Right.
That's for sure. One thing that could be looked at is, of course, is a later start time for elementaries, which would move secondary to a later time. And that would resolve one part of the problem, but it would create other problems where you, if you did make that choice to move a later start time for the elementaries, it would necessitate moving a later start time for the secondary, which would then put your dismissal, which is really like in the day. So it's, there's always cons and pros in making all those decisions and shifting those routes.
Are we allowed to say something?
Sure. I will. Sure. Any principals, gentlemen?
My wife, my wife had surgery, well, 13, and I had to drop my son off at school. She was anything else, but I would drop my son off at 7:00 or 7:30, whatever the old start time was for elementary. And there would be kids, elementary students, at 6:30 in the morning, sitting out there in front of the school because the parent had to get to work. And I'd much rather an older student be sitting out there than I would an elementary student sitting out there. So that's my opinion.
I suppose, and I haven't been talking about tardies, but also early infants, I know on my campus are a big issue. And Mike has started moving to a later start time. It pushes the time back. Fridays like Mass Exodus on my campus. And if I can get parents to meet their kids past 2:00, that's a major feat for certain populations of my kids. So they'll get them there by 9:00 because they don't want them home all day, but they'll certainly pick them up earlier if we extend the day to the end of the day. So I think we have to look at those tardies, but also those kids that do early or not on the front because they want to go home early or the parents are in the area and want to make them up.
I was just going to mention the same thing, just a process. We had in the late, we had the later start time this elementary, and we would have faculty meetings before school as opposed to after. I would pull up at 6:30, and there would already be babies. Those parents had driven away.
Yeah, left.
In front of a car waiting, they were driving away. So yes, we took them in, but they were, so the time change in, with you, I would rather a high schooler be out on the curb than my kindergarten.
So we're getting the basic personnel there earlier based on the fact that they're reporting earlier in the elementary schools.
I didn't want to hear anything.
You don't want to hear from the people that like it. You don't hear from the nice ears.
We tried to get ahead of the curve. We, as a staff, the reason this was not a board decision, the board trusts us and the expertise of the staff, but as a community member, you have a field for the community. And it's up to the staff of the school district to bring you recommendations. And thank goodness we have a board that's supportive and trusts the recommendations of the staff and our ability to research and put the resources needed to make these kind of decisions. And then it's our job to educate you on, here's the background and reasons. So Ms. Harold, thank you for asking the questions you've asked. We're more than happy to address those questions and provide the data that supports our decisions anytime you need.
Okay, automated on the agenda is a consent count, consideration minutes, consideration bonus reports, consideration person reports, consideration personnel reports, consideration construction items, consideration bilingual, TSK program evaluation, consideration of shared services agreement on the combo ISD for regional day school. Any questions on the consent count? Motion to approve the consent count. Second, I would prefer to say aye. I suppose. Motion is approved. Out of nine on the agenda is consideration of resolution concerning sales surplus real profit.
Do you think, think you have your accurate information about 0.02 acre of one of our sorcerers' room? Happy to entertain any questions that you guys have on that, but also from the county.
Is there motion to approve the resolution concerning sales surplus real profit? Second, I would prefer to say aye. I suppose. I'm ten on the agenda is consideration of change order for projector and screen and auditorium for the Bob 2015 at New Caneyville.
Yes, sir. Just asking for approval of a change order to take care of the new projector and screen that are needed in the auditorium at New Caneyville. As you guys know, it's our biggest auditorium, has the biggest capacity in the district, used by lots of different groups, so appreciate you letting us go through that.
Get down.
Terrible lighting, terrible.
Well, that's there too. That's the next one.
Sorry, I got a little ahead of my.
No, it's okay. I understand. I was a principal there, you guys back in 2012. So I'm sure it's a lot worse now, but we're going to fix it.
Is there any other question? Is there motion to approve the change order for the projector, the screen, and auditorium? I would prefer to say aye. I suppose. Motion is approved. Out of my left on the agenda is consideration of change order for auditorium light fixtures at New Caneyville School.
Same subject, desperate need of replacement. They tried several different ways to fix and use the fixtures they had, but were unable to solve multiple problems in there. So this is a recommendation to make that right.
I would say so.
Thank the original picture.
They might be. They need some help, so.
Ken was teaching.
I'll be right.
Is there motion to approve the change order for the auditorium light fixtures at New Caneyville School?
You guys, come on. Speak up. Tell me who's next.
Me. Chad wanted to do like, he is the second.
Motion to approve the second, I would prefer to say aye. I suppose. Motion is approved. Out of two on the agenda is consideration of approval to award agreement with Salissa O'Brien, Porter High School.
Something that we don't really have a choice in either. This is work that needs to be done, but we're impartial when we act on Porter High School. And so this is a warrant that agreement to Salissa O'Brien to take care of those projects.
Questions? Is there motion to award the agreement with Salissa O'Brien at Porter High School? I would prefer to say aye. I suppose. Motion is approved. Out of 13 on the agenda is consideration of revised district innovation plan. Ms. Chauvin.
Okay, last month, we brought an amendment to the district of innovation plan. Ninety percent of our staff voted to investigate going with an innovative calendar. And so one of the things we wanted to do was amend our district of innovation plan where we could have possibly less days for our teachers to work to deal with that calendar. That just leaves for some option for us. It's been posted on the website for 30 days and as of yesterday, and so we wanted to come back to it for your approval.
Any questions? Is there motion to approve the revised district of innovation plan? Absolutely. Motion to approve the sale, I would prefer to say aye. I suppose. Motion is approved. Enough of the business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:30.